Alright, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Education meeting for August fourteenth. It's seven oh two. And first order of business, um, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, exits are at the far back on the side over here. You can take a right or left and just follow the hallway directly outside. We'll move right along tonight. Um, report of the board chair, I have a few, um, things. We've had a, first of all, thank you guys all for coming. I know Laurel could not be with us tonight and Taya has an illness and Cara is zooming in. I will keep my phone like up here so if she loses connection or something like that, so that's the only reason I'm looking at my phone. We've had a very busy summer. Most boards of education take, um, July off and historically this board usually does too, but we found that this year with so much going on, we've had, uh, we had two meetings actually in July, um, that we took care of and subcommittees are continuing to meet. So I just wanna really thank everybody for their participation in that, the administration and Dr. DeBrito for, um, helping out with that and for Cindy, um, who attends a lot of our meetings and Kelly who does all of our transcribing of everything. We have two correspondence that I received. One is from Joe Spurgeon, the chairman of the capital improvements. Um, and this is in relation to the renovation project being finished out, um, which is on our agenda. So I can pass that around if anybody would like. I did receive an email, um, today from Mark Biscotti with some questions on the usage policy. Um, basically just wanting some clarification on Little League and, um, and, um, East Hattam basketball. And I told him that we were addressing it here today and the purpose of, of the policy. So all pleasant, all good. Several CAPE updates. The education law update was sent out to everybody. If you didn't get a copy of that, it was about sixteen pages and it was in the end of June. Just wanna take, um, particular notice of certain pages and certain items on that. Essay twenty-four dash nine is a task force that's studying the effects of hate speech and social media. I'll be interested to see how that task force, um, really comes out and what they're gonna come out with. I'm sure CAPE will give us an update on that. Um, Public Act twenty-four dash seventy-four in regard to the SROs is, was out and Public Act twenty-four through ninety-three, um, updates of various statutes including special education and graduation. I know that you've kind of looked over all of that too. Usage of facilities, um, we're finally gonna be able to look at that policy. Um, a very special thanks to everybody on the Subcommittee of Policy for working on that and for all those who have attended those meetings as well to give input and everything. Um, I've received more than seventy-five emails from one particular person in regard to the usage um, and/or middle school track. Um, hopefully with this policy being updated, some of this will assist with those questions and, and some of the emails, not just to me as board chair but to the superintendents, to, uh, business managers, to coaches, to players. I mean, the list goes on and on. Um, so we're hoping that that's gonna help. Um, a meeting tomorrow with CAPE board chairs and the topic of conversation for our chat is going to be on cell phones and cellphone policies. Um, in the June highlight for, um, CAPE, uh, six nineteen, there was a large article in there in regard to, um, state mandates and more state mandates coming out about cell phones in classrooms. Not sure where that's all gonna kinda go and, um, we'll kinda continue on with our cellphone policy here. Later we'll discuss in here community outreach. Um, the board is going to be doing a lot more as far as being accessible, um, during the school year, so we'll go over that. I know we still need to schedule, um, a meeting with CAPE and hearing officers. We'll try to get that in. It's just like there's so many meetings and everything and so it's still on the, on the works, but you know, I do wanna, I do wanna get that addressed as soon as possible. The newspaper, um, just so people out in general know, we do submit articles to, to the paper. It's up to the paper whether they feel it's timely or if they have room, where they put it, how big they put it. We can't control that. Um, so I know that there was a couple of parents who had reached out about accolades for our students and everything. We'll work with the paper, um, as we get closer into the end of next year to make sure that they can maybe reserve space for us or we can work together on that. But efforts were, were made on that. Long-range planning, we'll meet on the twenty-second. Um, for those who haven't heard either, there's been a change in the chairmanship of the Board of Finance. Uh, Joe Corbett stepped down from being, um, chair for, uh, work reasons and Todd Gelson is now the chair of Board of Finance. We're really excited to work with him too. And we'll be reaching out to him. I also wanted to, um, bring up the new state regulation, section seven, Public Act twenty-four, twenty-five, um, which is permitting boards of education to use a amount of, um, their funds that are left over at the end of the year without getting like loads of, um, of, um, of approval, thank you, from, um, you know, other boards and from the towns and stuff. We'll be going over that. That's really a business and planning thing and long-range and Board of Finance subject, but I just wanted to let you know that we are aware of that too. Um, and, uh, we don't have audience here for this, Audience as Citizens, but I'm going to be working on new verbiage for Audiences as Citizens. Um, and wanna try to get some board input on that as far as some boards are saying that they only want things that are on the agenda. I, I don't necessarily agree with that or if we wanna do two, one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end, um, and you know, how long and what we're going to allow people to speak of. I really, um, am protective of, of our staff. Um, sometimes people come up and they make comments in regard to staff members or teachers that are identifiable. We've had that in the past and as a board as we know, we can't say anything and, um, it, it's not exactly right. So, um, we just wanna work on that a little bit, but we want people to have a voice, but we want it to have an appropriate voice, you know, and finding out if people are speaking, if they're from East Hattam or not, but not giving out full addresses. So I'm gonna change that as well. Um, so that's really all I had to say. Anybody have any questions for me?
I have a question before we move on to the action on the minutes. Is now like an appropriate time for that?
Is it in regard to the minutes or in regard to something I said?
It was in regard to, um, the things that you have talked about.
Then that's the time.
So we received two, um, letters from the community. They were, could you remind me what they were again? There was one for...
Oh, we got one from, um, Joe Spurgeon and he's the chairman of the Capital Improvement Committee. Want me to read it?
No, no, no. What was the other one?
Um, the other one was just an email from Mark Biscotti, who's actually a board member, but...
Okay, that was what I wanted to make sure I heard correctly because, um, Mr. Biscotti is a member of this board but has not shown up or been present for any of our meetings or subcommittee meetings, so it strikes me as odd that he would submit questions when all of that information is available to the public but also discussed in public meetings. So I just wanted to go on the record to say that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else in regard to my report?
Um, I would, I guess, third that sentiment.
Okay.
Um, but the other thing I was gonna say, you were talking about the Audience as Citizens and if I understood you correctly, it's gonna be a, uh, a more developed discussion at some point. Um, but I would just say that one of the reasons that you restrict the Audience of Citizens to agenda items is to help control the problems that you were citing that can happen.
Right.
And it, I understand the validity and, and the, the desire to just sort of have an open forum. But it's like any other open forum, once it's open, it's open. And that may not always be great.
You know, and, and I, and I'm gonna agree with you. It's just very challenging as we saw in June. We obviously didn't have, um, you know, things on the agenda because it went out before issues kinda came up. So, but we wanna...
That was a very different, that was a very different thing.
Right. So, um, you know, it's, it, it's a tough call, but I want people to be able to come up and talk to us and say, you know what, I have a challenge with your budget or, you know, I have a challenge with curriculum or something. I want people to be able to come up and talk about that and it might not be on the agenda and we wanna hear from them.
So are you looking for more of feedback from the board to provide guidelines for participants? Or is it just more on what is the process?
Well, the, I think what I'm, what I'm kinda indicating is I'm gonna change the verbiage which we normally read, you know, when people kinda come up. Um, it, it's very stern, like you can't hand papers in, um, you know, state your name, state all this. So, um, kinda looking at that. Um, if it's something that's way off the agenda or something. So I'm gonna probably put together a little verbiage thing, send it out to all the board members, see what you kinda think and then go from there. But I want it to work for the audience too.
I don't see a reason to not have at the end of the meeting just an open forum that anybody in the audience can get up and say something. It's not, like if you're gonna speak at the beginning of the meeting, I, speaking for myself, feel like it should pertain to the agenda because that's what we're going to be going through there on out. But at the end of the meeting, if you're here and you've, you've sat through the whole meeting and you have questions or concerns or something that you just wanna be heard about, absolutely come up, take a few minutes, say your piece.
Right.
In my understanding, it wouldn't be the same as a town hall meeting, so we wouldn't be able to give the responses, but they would be heard. And then we could, based on community outreach at the end of the meetings, schedule a town hall type of meeting where we could have a back and forth.
I tend to agree with that. I like the fact I'm really not a fan of restricting voice in any way, shape or form. I do like the sticking to the agenda in the beginning and I am a fan of, you know, especially if you're gonna be a say-whatever at the end, that you should be a town, you know, citizen from East, or Hattam. So I mean, you should be able to state your address. You know, we don't want everybody just coming from wherever and just talking about whatever.
Right.
But...
And that's all public knowledge anyway. If you're, if you live in town, it's on the tax, like you can, it's not a...
So, we'll have to look at, let me look at some of the legalities and some of those things about how and what CAPE is recommending. I have that meeting tomorrow. They have an open forum and we'll go from there on it. Okay, um, anything else? Let's move along. Audience as citizens, there's nobody here and I don't see any emails that have come in. So we'll move along. Action on the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the special minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty-four? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I have to abstain. I don't know if you can hear me, but I will get that made in.
Oh, there you are. I was just gonna ask where you were.
Hi.
Hi, Cara.
Hi, Cara.
Hi.
Alright, Cara is abstaining. Cara, did you have anything in regard to the chairman's report? I know I'm going backwards. I didn't realize you were there.
Oh, sorry. No, 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 I totally agree, uh, with Sean. I'm, um, I don't think we should limit people's discussion, but you definitely should be a citizen from town. I mean, I definitely agree with that.
Yeah, I think...
I mean, within, I mean, unless there's something highly important and like I'm talking about our June meeting. There was people that weren't from town who were very important, you know, pieces to that puzzle. So, you know, I guess within reason.
I, I'm, I have checked with legal counsel when you have an open Audience as citizen of what that means. Um, I'm gonna check with CAPE tomorrow on it 'cause I don't wanna squash other people from coming in. You know, it might be somebody that's, you know, look at it in a positive way. It might be someone from Colchester says, hey, I have phenomenal news to share. You know, we want them to be able to share that. So, yeah, let me check with that and go from there. Okay. Um, sorry to revert back. Is there, moving back to where we're supposed to be? I'm sorry, Cara. Just pipe in anytime. Um, motion to approve the special minutes, uh, meeting minutes of July eighteen. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any, um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstainer?
I will abstain, I wasn't there.
I have to abstain 'cause I was also absent for that meeting.
Alright, thank you, Cara. That's fine.
Well, the board chair can vote.
Yeah, right, okay. So I'm gonna vote yes as well, okay.
Report of the superintendent. Happy summer. Although it feels like, um, the weather's starting to change a little bit and perhaps summer is starting to depart. Although, um, want to just let everybody know that at the schools, the administrators and all the staff have been working very diligently to fill vacancies. Um, the biggest challenge has, has been the French position that we're still working through, but Don and his staff getting all the buildings ready, um, interior and exterior. So I'm glad to hear that things are progressing. And we were surprised to learn that the duck cleaning was as quick as it was at the high school. We displaced everyone thinking it was gonna be for four weeks and it was really only a few days.
What, what cleaning?
The duck cleaning.
Duck cleaning.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I still have my hearing aid issue.
Oh, sorry. Um, we received some unfortunate news today. Um, we had expected Eversource to step up with a grant to help support the HVAC project that was gonna be over a million dollars. The project is not big enough. Um, the efficiencies are not enough for them to offer, um, that grant and so they're expecting to provide maybe a hundred fifty thousand. So it was a blow today, was a hit. I met with Irene. We're expecting to have another referendum. Um, Capital Improvement, um, Projects Committee is going to have a meeting to authorize us to at least order the chiller. It, it has officially died at the high school. So also looking to change the location of convocation um, because putting everybody in the auditorium, knowing that we will not have, um, the cooler air, don't wanna do that. So looking to have it here at the municipal complex on August twenty-seventh. So more details...
We'll be in the, the gym.
Gym here, yep. I already talked to Lisa from Park and Rec. Like, you know, all the balls are rolling. We had to check with Linda to make sure there are no conflicts. Um, so that's, that seems to be the, the plan moving forward. Um, want to share that the events in June continue to be in the forefront of the work that we do and we were very happy to work with the Department of Justice. Um, they have a Community Relations Service Department and a lead conciliation specialist met with the secondary principals, both Reina and Chris, myself, Josh, and I included Irene, um, for, um, just some sharing of how they provide consultation, how they can provide training, um, tools that they have. There is no charge to the district, um, but we welcome that partnership. Also working with this representative to meet with affected families because we need to work towards healing. Uh, so, uh, the representative is in touch with a primary family that was involved, but now bridging that to also offer opportunities for families to come together. Um, so we definitely want to continue this work and, um, we're gonna start with the middle school to take on an initiative where students will be trained to reflect on the needs of the school and come up with solutions and progress. Um, and the facilitators for those committees at the school level are required to be, um, outside individuals, not employees of the school. So another opportunity for the community to be a part of building progress movement for us. So wanted to share that. In regard to cell phones, CAPS sent out a survey to all superintendents because the governor is looking to have the State Department of Ed, um, develop a policy that districts can also adopt. So it, this is a worldwide issue. This is not an East Hattam or just the United States issue. Um, it definitely crosses, um, the seas as a concern, um, for our youth. So wanted to share that.
Excuse me a second, Teresa, just a quick question. If the governor does have the State Department of Ed create a policy like that, does that have the force of law where we are then required to adopt it or is it still voluntary?
At this time, it is going to be a developed policy that a district can adopt if they would like to adopt and go through their procedure. It is not, there's no discussion of it becoming a legislated requirement.
Okay, thank you.
It's just to assist so that we're all doing the same work. So we're not spinning our wheels and everyone's creating their own. So, so that's why there's this initiative because it's, it's a pervasive problem across, um, all schools for adolescents. Uh, there was a sports app that was sent out to families, um, recently. A, a new app, uh, that the high school sent out that once opened actually took families to the document that is completed for the doctor. And so the questions that were on that document seemed like the district wanted that information that has since been rectified and that is not what is popping up. Um, but it's the same form that I recall using going to the doctor with my own kids who, you know, needed their physical, wanted approval to be on the sports team. So just in case you hear anything, um, 'cause at first there were some parents alarmed um, because there was, again, this mishap. So we learned about it, it's been fixed. And one other thing, just to share, um, the work that we're doing with the Department of Justice, we also learned that there are, um, other meetings that are happening outside of the district and the town that are on the same topic that we're just learning about. We're not a part of, but we're also learning that the discussions are continuing.
These are the racial concerns?
These are correct, the racial concerns, yes. I think that's it for right now, okay.
Somebody have any questions for Dr. DeBrito? Cara? Hi, Cara.
Hi. No questions at the moment, thank you.
Okay, Terry?
None.
Jim?
I'm all set.
Tom?
No.
I'll sit.
Okay. Um, the cellphone policy, I'll just piggyback with that. I, I mean, there's a group, um, email list that kinda goes between board chairs and this has been a major topic that's been going on. I think that's why it's the center of our conversation tomorrow for our meeting. Um, districts are all over the place as far as, um, what policies they have, when they're updating them. So I feel like, and the same thing with social media. You know, it's, it's not just a hail rate issue or, you know, a middle school issue here, it's, it's everywhere. Um, and what's happening on social media. So it was kinda interesting. Um, moving on to committee reports, policy and instruction.
Um, policy and instruction has met twice since our last full board meeting. We met on July twelfth and then again on August twelfth. During that time, um, we put a lot of effort in to addressing the facilities use policy. And, um, just to assuage anybody who might happen to hear this, um, regular local stuff like Little League teams are not suddenly gonna get charged money. Um, I have a feeling that that might have been a concern that was never on the table. We have, and, and again, this is for the general public 'cause I know everybody here knows this. We, there has been interest from outsiders um, and for folks who are basically doing for-profit things and they're looking to use our facilities and we have a responsibility to not only protect those facilities but to not be subsidizing those outside ventures because we don't charge them what it costs us to make them available.
We'll go over that with the policy.
Right, so we'll go over that then. Um, we have also been working on an electronics, um, device policy. We thought we had it pretty close to done and now I don't know what to do. There's a part of me that would like to go through and do what we've done. There's another part of me that thinks it might be a really bad idea 'cause we're gonna have to redo a lot of it. Um, Dr. DeBrito, do you, i- is there any indication as to when anything might come from the state? Within a month, that quickly? Okay, so it might make more sense to wait then.
If, well, we'll go over that 'cause we have that on here too, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, okay. And my recommendation would be is to make sure that whatever we have in the policy now is, um, enforceable and can be worked with for the administration. So if the administration is good with it...
That's always the case with any policy.
Okay.
Policy that's...
We, we did have discussion and possible action on a public forum for cell phones. That's different.
That's different, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Um, but that's what I can tell you.
Alright, so that's your update?
Yep.
Cara? Business and planning.
We are meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-first, at six P.M., so stay tuned.
Okay. Personal and negotiations has not met. I have a frog in my throat, I'm sorry.
Oh, tell him to get out of there.
I know, exactly. Capital improvements, um, we have a letter from Joe Spurgeon on that. They have completed, I'm just gonna read this so everybody has it. The Capital Improvements Building Committee hereby verifies that the twenty-twenty East Hattam Elementary School renovation project, state ID... East Hattam Elementary School renovation project, state ID number 041-0049EC, has been completed. The Capital Improvement Project Committee acknowledges that the Board of Selectmen cannot disband the committee until final closeout of the state of Connecticut regarding school construction grant funding for all eligible projects under the committee's charge. In addition, the Board of Selectmen can add projects to the charge of the committee as needed in the future. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. A copy of the committee minutes from December 14th, 2023 are available in the Board of Education office. Sincerely, Joseph Spurgeon, Chairman of Capital Improvements. So that's where they are.
That's the sidewalk.
That's the envelope project. The window, windows. Yep, windows and doors.
Something different, thank you.
Yep. So that's what we have for that. Lauren?
Last meeting was Thursday, June 13th and they gave a superintendent's perspective, state of the agency sort of year-end wrap-up presentation. They also provided updates on a bunch of site visits that they had done. And lastly, there was a recommendation by a board member, which I thought I would pass along to everyone, a book called Brave New Words. It's How AI Will Revolutionize Education and Why It's a Good Thing. The author is Salman Khan. So definitely want to check that out.
Oh, I definitely do.
What was his last name again?
Uh, Khan, K-H-A-N.
Oh, I'll definitely read that. AI is a huge thing in, in the workforce right now.
Yeah, I've been listening to a lot on NPR about college professors setting policies for using AI for writing papers.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's becoming a very, I, I would just share. I was at a meeting for industrial plant engineers and this was a year and a half ago. And the topic was, you know, come listen to my speech about AI. And my boss and I looked at each other like, this doesn't pertain to us. And the first thing he said is, if you're not aware of this now, by the end of the year, you will be using it. Everybody in the industry is using it and kids are using it pervasively as well. So it can be a great learning tool, but it also has some severe detrimental things, but.
It does. And, and the interesting thing is AI learns along with that student or the institution or whoever is using it. So it's constantly collecting data on you so that it learns about you. So there's pluses and minuses to that. So it'll be an interesting read.
Feel that that's slightly creepy?
Well, and, and I don't want to too, get too far off the subject of this, but because it's on your learning report, I'm going to add to this. There is a conversation between legal teams at the last meeting that I went to in regard to issues of putting information on there to write an IEP or to write a staff letter or to write a disciplinary report. There, it's a, it's a very serious issue where this comes in for schools. We're looking at it in an industrial way, trademark information, or if you name your client in there, there's a huge amount of legal stuff that's going to come out on that. I don't think it's hit schools yet, but I think if it's hitting industry, it's going to hit schools very shortly.
And what question that brings up is privacy. If you are creating a letter.
On the internet.
You're putting it on the internet and this is this child's specific information that is being cracked.
It's, it's a very big legal thing.
And another side of that is that these AI companies are using information that's available on the web, much of which is copyrighted, copyrighted in order to provide machine learning for the, for the software. And they're not paying for it. They're just using it. And there are a lot of people that aren't too happy about that either.
Right. We don't have to worry about that part.
Thank God.
Okay.
One terrifying aspect of AI is impersonation. This has been on the news, I want to say like going back a year ago, where you get a call and it sounds just like your child, like frantic and asking for money and where it has to go, like this was on the news. And so they, I remember going to a PD for educators and they replicated, it was the US Secretary of Education sounded just like him. You had to really listen hard. And if you know him personally, you could say, oh, something's off. But if you don't know him personally.
Right.
It was practically identical. So that is probably one of the most terrifying aspects of the dangers of AI and how it can be misused. And so just want to alert you to that.
That might be a good, when we talk about community outreach, we're going to be talking with the committee for cell phones. That might be an excellent one as well, the, you know, pros and cons.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, you know, district-wise, statewide. And I'll bring that up at the CADE meeting tomorrow as well. And because I would like their guidance on that. Okay, Ray Bourne, what's your?
We have not met since our last meeting.
And long-range capital improvements, I'll speak for Cara out there. We're meeting on the 20th. Right, Cara?
Did that finally get scheduled?
Yes, the 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall if anyone wants to come.
Excellent. Thank you, Cara.
Thank you.
All right, new business. Approval of the closure of the elementary school renovation program. I've read you the letter from Joe Spurgeon and I will be looking for a motion this evening. That is, the East Hattam Board of Education hereby accepts the 2020 East Hattam Elementary School renovation project, state project number 041-0049EC as completed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
It is fully completed as it was supposed to and everything's.
Everything else.
All right, thank you.
Dr. DeBrido, you're okay with it?
Of course, absolutely. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cara?
Aye.
Okay, and no one opposed. Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on a public forum on cell phones in schools. So we do not have a date set for this. We're waiting until the schools kind of solidify all of their dates. But the goal of this is to, for us, Dr. DeBrido and whomever else, maybe somebody from the state or maybe someone from CADE, come in and discuss what the laws are with the cell phones, where we're kind of going. And then get parent input and teacher input, anybody to kind of speak up. What do you, what do you think about cell phones in the schools by different ages? We need it to be open. There's, there's people on all different levels of this, all different ages. Some parents in different communities have been, you know, very, very vocal that they want to be able to get a hold of their kids in case of an emergency. We need to hear that. We need to talk about that. We also need to hear from the teachers about what their challenges are or what they feel is going to work. Us putting together a policy has to be, number one, enforceable and it has to work for everybody as much as possible. But we have to protect our students. We have to protect our staff.
So my question to this, now hearing that all the way up to the state governors in the next month is going to be putting out anything from like absolute regulation to general guidance. I am 100,000% on board with community feedback on things, but my question for this specifically is if we have the possibility of being told whether we have this much guidelines or like have to do this.
Correct.
I, I'm open to hearing the community, but like all of our hands are tied. We have to do what we have to do.
I think you're absolutely right. We have to wait to hold a forum until we know what we get from the state.
So sec, like kind of coming back on top of that, scheduling a public forum in general, I think would be a really great idea, getting a date down. Because even if our hands are tied on the cellphone use, it would be an opportunity for the community to show up and just, whatever questions, concerns, praise, anger, et cetera, that they have to say, that would be a place.
About that item, right.
About, no, no, I mean, just about the education in general. It'd be like a, like a town hall type situation where it would be according to an agenda.
I think, I think that if we're doing, I would like to handle just the cell phones as one entity.
Oh, yes. But if we can't, if we find out before October that.
Then it'll be sharing, but the state is going to come down, as, as Dr. DeBrido said, the state is going to probably come down with a recommended, not a regulation.
Okay.
And I think that that needs to be discussed to the public so that parents are also aware of what that is. But there's a much deeper conversation about this. It's like search and seizure of telephones. What does that mean? Where, you know, where.
Yes.
There's so much more to cell phones that I think that we can have a public communication out and have a meeting just dedicated to it. And that's going to be handled either with guest speakers, Dr. DeBrido. We're going to, we're putting it together is what I'm saying. So everybody in agreement.
I think that that is probably the wisest course of action right now because you don't want to, I mean, it's important to Jackie's point to get the public's input on this to help us formulate all of this. You know, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. So.
Correct. Let's wait.
Regulations.
Especially.
Get it all in a timely manner.
Especially if what we're going to get from the state is likely to be advisory as opposed to regulatory.
Right.
Because that means we're going to have to make some decisions.
Right.
And I, I think we, I think Jackie's right. I think we need to hear from other people. I do think, you know, I, I would make two comments, one of which I think is really obvious and fine, but the other one might be a little bit different. Having a discussion about whether cell phones should be in schools and if so, how they're used and, and all of that makes perfect sense to me after we get that input from the state. Having a discussion about the search or seizure of cell phones makes no sense to me at all.
That's a law.
That's law.
Right, well, that's something that we need to explain what is discussionable, what is negotiable, and what is not.
Right, because.
You know, but there's, we'll handle that with the agenda with the guest speaker. We'll let them do their, their work on it, but I think that.
Get Tom Mooney back.
But I think that that, that'll work, that'll work well.
But the, the good thing here is that you've got, it, it's not a mandated policy. They're just providing a framework for us. We're getting the input from community. And then once we have all the information and we've shared what we know with the community, then we end on what works for our community.
Right, and I think it's important because our union presidents have gotten a lot of requests from teachers in regards to that. And I think it's important to have them there as well, if they want to come, and say, these are some of the challenges. And let's work together as a community in, in doing what is best. This has worked really well with other communities. From what I understand with, from talking with CADE, we're going to talk more about it tomorrow. Just putting it out there on the docket that this is going to probably come probably late October, early November, depending on what the state has to say.
I think we should do it. Do we need a motion to that effect or we just go forward?
No, we just go forward on it. This is information sharing.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Cara, you have anything on that subject?
Oh, I think a town hall meeting with information and public input, both is a very good idea.
Okay, okay. All right. Discussing, discussion and possible action on policy 1330, use the school facilities for first read. James?
Okay. I, I want to just make a couple of points real quick. First off, there has been increased interest in using our facilities ever since the, the opening of the athletic field and, and all of that. And it represents a substantial investment by this community on infrastructure that other people now want to use. Now, it seems to me that in a general sense for personal use, like people who want to go up and walk the field, if it's not being used, there's no reason they shouldn't have to do, shouldn't be able to do that and they don't need to reserve time or pay a fee. You know, that, that to me is self-evident. But there are other classes of people that will be getting involved. And they are described in the policy and it will guide what happens. The actual implementation, as with everything else, falls under the, the heading of the superintendent of schools. Dr. DeBrio will manage all of that. The proposal is for a fee structure to be developed and I believe that's being worked on now and then updated annually as needed. And the proposal also is that that does not need to be something where there's a big motion of discussion. It would be added to the consent agenda and as long as everybody was comfortable with it, we would move forward. And if they weren't, it gets pulled out of the consent agenda just like anything else. I'd also like to point out that the policy is broken up into different chunks. And what I mean by that is that the policy itself is not all that long, but there's a regulation that goes with it, which is longer and provides a lot more direction for the community and for the administration and town. Those things are, the regulations, once this is adopted, are part of the policy and would need to be updated through a policy change, should that be necessary. I don't think, it's my intent, and I don't think it was the team's intent, but I might be corrected, that the forms that I provided and updated are necessarily part of that. That should be something that's part of the administration's normal work. They, they set forms. I put some stuff together as suggestions to be helpful. But they're not, they're not approvable, in my view, as part of the policy. I think that would be tying the hands of the administration in a very foolish way. And I think that pretty much covers anything I can think to say. If anybody has any questions, you know, interestingly enough, most of the people that are here are on the policy committee. They know all this stuff already. So I don't know what I could possibly tell anybody that they don't know, but if you have questions, let me know.
So this policy does define what a group is and that's one of the things. And again, there was a lot of questions in regard to individuals going out and using the track or, you know, playing with their kids.
Explicitly allows that.
And that's perfectly fine. What we are, what we are looking at is groups and groups for profit. We know that there have been groups that have or people that have collected money from people. They're not a 501(c). They're just showing up, using the track. They might be town residents that are, are, are doing it. But we need to kind of rope some of this in because Don, our facilities manager, needs to know a schedule so that they know, like, let's take the athletic facility. When can he go in there and brush off the turf, right? He needs that whole area. When can he go in and weed whack? He obviously doesn't wanna do weed whacking around the perimeter of the track while there's a meet going on. You know, so there's, there's a lot of components kinda going in there. Um, we have had outside groups reach out to us about using the facility as well. Um, and they would want that either for a day, for a weekend. And there's, there has to be a cost for that.
Well, because it costs us to have it available.
Right, there's.
We're not necessarily looking to make a profit off of people, but we can't let them make a profit off us either.
Right.
Not if they're getting it for free.
Idea that isn't the policy, but just the track use in general, like. Again, cart before the horse, always.
Yeah.
Policy fees, everything gets set. Would it be plausible to have like a calendar?
Me too. That's all the.
Where it, like, whatever, when it's reserved? Like for like, say for November, March. You know, when it's reserved for different groups.
That has this field, who's using it, this field, who's using it.
The track itself is, like, we discussed, people walk it and.
It's certainly more with the, with the high school. The um athletic director and Chris kinda manage a lot of that. And you pretty much know that every day after school it's being used. I can talk to Chris about putting something out there.
Eventually, once this all goes through.
It shouldn't come from Chris. It should come from the business office. This stuff needs to go in a regular setting.
Yeah, if you, if you want me to talk.
Sure.
So, right now, the way the process is working and it'll change slightly, but um we do.
Cindy, can you come up here just so that number one, people can see you and they can hear you better? We're inviting Cindy Houston up to the, up to the table so that everybody can see and hear our business manager.
So anyway, so there is a process right now with forums. Um, so if somebody is interested in wanting to rent a facility. There's a, there's an online form. Anybody can go online, use that form. That form then goes to the school secretaries. To where they look at their calendars within the building. Um, it also goes to the um business office and director of facilities office. Where we have one master calendar of the entire district of everything that's going on because it's more than just necessarily. Whether there's a team on the track, it could be that Don has something scheduled to fix the track or.
Okay.
There's something else going on. So there are other things that would happen that we wouldn't necessarily wanna put on a, on a public calendar out there.
Okay, thank you.
So, but there is an overall master calendar and there is a a succession of approvals. Prior to anybody being able to use any property, but we do have one master calendar that our business office does cover. But each one of the schools also has a master calendar for their own schools because I don't really care if the BTO is using, you know, the library on. At two thirty in the afternoon or a school group is, but but we do have one big master calendar, just to answer that question.
Okay, yeah, I think.
But it's just not really public.
And individuals are fine. I mean, we kinda know, like, whoever goes down there and walks, if there's, if the team is working out. You just come back another time.
Okay.
You know, most, most of the people are are pretty good about that. Summertime now, you find a lot of people down there, actually before seven AM. Um, and they're leaving at like seven o'clock in the morning. Um, the, the SROs and SSOs do watch the um people coming in and out during the day. Because you cannot go walk down there during the day, the, you know, that's just kinda common sense.
Not when school's in session.
Right, not when school is in session. Um, so, you know, and the community kinda knows all of these things. It is also in the, in the policy on that.
Thank you.
Kira, do you have anything?
No, I read everything and I think uh everyone can understand the policy if they read it and it's um. I think it was ten years old. I think was the last time it was updated and now that we have the track, it's definitely a need to, to be updated.
Okay.
And and one other thing, just to make sure everybody, again, publicly, if anybody ever listens to this at some point. This doesn't just in uh cover fields or track.
Right.
This is all the buildings and again, that may become, e- especially as the. Um, auditorium at the high school gets renovated and the lighting systems and all, those things may then become more in demand from public use also. And so this will, it will provide a structure and a backbone for everything in the district.
Correct. And just so it's very, very clear, as you said about um. Little League or, you know, some of our, our, our regulars there. Parking rack goes through a different system of just contacting. The business manager, getting the forms ready, getting on, that does not. That's not.
No, it, as a matter of fact, it it preserves um a special pre-approved status.
Right.
That existed in the original policy.
Yep.
For exactly that kinda stuff.
Right.
So.
So just wanna make sure that everybody's very clear on this and we're not trying, we're not trying to limit our, our town. Groups or, or anything of that nature, but we do need to make sure that. You know, for-profit people or people have gotta sign up for, for using the facilities. So I'm gonna close discussion if there's no more discussion on this. Is there a motion to approve the first read of policy? One three three oh.
So moved.
Jackie and Terry. Or you can have it too.
I don't care. I just didn't hear. I can't hear what you're doing without my hearing.
We'll speak loud and clear. Discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty five.
Don't you have to take a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Okay, discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty five Board of Education regular meeting schedule. That is in our.
So, the only thing that I noticed comparing it to the twenty four, twenty five school calendar is that on March twelfth. It is early dismissal and there are parent teacher conferences.
Yep, and we, we were actually discussing, discussing that. Um. Usually the staff's not coming to our meetings and um. You know, we could push it back if we wanted to or push it forward. It's totally up to what we wanna do. Or might not affect us. It doesn't really affect some of us because we make our appointments during the day. Or early evening.
Does Dr. DeBrito?
Usually they end by seven o'clock.
Would the admin staff care about that at all?
Usually, you know, they would come only if there was something on the agenda that they would require their presence, right? So um.
Usually it ends by seven, too. You know, you're.
There are afternoon blocks, time blocks to meet with the teachers. That's why it's early dismissal, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you can work around it with the other days or earlier in the day.
Big concern of yours?
Not a huge concern. I just. If we could push it a week when there's nothing going on, like we're the.
Sure.
Board of Ed and if there's district-wide conferences.
Okay.
What's gonna come up, who has what going on.
So let's look at our calendars.
Come up in February where we needed people to be here.
Do you wanna do it on the nineteenth instead?
Go beyond our time that we start? Does it go till like eight or nine PM?
Yeah.
Not, but also before you can make that decision, I do have to get permission from the board, from the municipal office complex, from Linda. I don't know what the building, this room schedule is.
Gotcha.
We can't guarantee you that.
We have these dates that have been previewed. These have been approved.
Okay, cool.
So, do we stay with these dates or do you wanna table this and look at the nineteenth?
I would suggest or move that we stay with these dates with the provision that if the nineteenth is available. Um, we decide at a later date that we might want to move it, the twelve.
We need to set our calendar so far in advance, so once you set the calendar, it, the twelve. We can leave it as the twelfth, we can cancel out the twelfth and do a special meeting on the nineteenth if you want, but you have to set a calendar.
Well, I, I know that. I was thinking of the second option that you just mentioned.
Okay, so vote on this the way it is and then if we want to change the um. Change the twelfth, we'll cancel out the twelfth and make the nineteenth a special meeting?
Cool, yeah, that works.
I think that makes sense.
Little asterisk thing, like there might be.
Okay, sure. Okay. Kira? How you out there?
I did look at my calendar all the way till January twenty twenty six, which seems very odd. And I did, I do agree with Jackie. That's like the only date that I saw on the school calendar that we have for the. Twenty-four, twenty-five school year that would conflict with our meeting and I think like conferences are over by like seven.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I just, yes, I, you know, it was probably the only date I was concerned about.
Okay, so is everybody okay with approving it and then if we need to cancel it, we'll cancel it and then make a special? Meeting?
Yes.
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 Okay, good. Is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty five uh meeting agenda as noted?
Still moved.
Second.
I had to get one in there somewhere tonight.
Alright, discussion and possible action of the adoption of.
You gotta let people vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the second time tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 No one's opposed. Thank you. Well, now I, I appreciate I just moving right along. Discussion and possible action of the adoption of this vision and I'm gonna hand that over to Dr. DeBrio.
So if you recall, um, we had met um to really uh look at um. What I've experienced coming to the district in my short six months and really taking in the input of stakeholders. And articulating um the vision in a way that um hopefully. Exudes an awakening to our community of educators and families that we really are committed. To inspiring our youth and preparing them for the future and so this was the language. So it's an opportunity to revisit the language, uh but it would be great to um. Either make some adjustments, but to rather soon hopefully adopt a vision that then can be further. Shared and I am happy to read it out loud. East Tatum is a district of distinction where educators value student success, parent outreach. And the power of accountable collective efficacy. We develop student passions, knowledge and civic mindedness. We ensure a nurturing, dynamic learning community where communication thrives, students excel. Rigorous instruction is the norm and developmental adolescent needs are heated. We believe in the power of not yet and reject ceilings so that students can soar. We love equitably and cultivate an environment where every student feels valued, supported and empowered. To persist through adversity.
Any comments, thoughts?
I love it.
I mean, I think we've all had a piece of this and discussed it and.
Yeah.
And can't speak for everyone, but very happy with it.
And it's a vision you're always working towards, like you're, like it, you're reaching high.
Yep.
You know, it does not limit how far we go.
It, it doesn't limit how far we go, um, but it does, I think, very clearly articulate very important values.
I love that it has soar in it, since soar is like the, the SOAR in.
How we start off with our little kids.
Yes, it's like from like pre-K all the way through uh graduating, so I really appreciate that.
Kira?
I think it's very well written. I just really hope we can, the district, to live up to all of that.
Remember, it's a vision. It's not a stopping point. You're always reaching and it keeps.
Right, and it keeps us reaching. That's the intent of a vision statement.
Continuous improvement.
Is there a motion to adopt the district's vision?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great. Board community calendar. Do we include that in here? Find it. As we discussed, the board wants to make a conscious effort to. Be out in the community and be um visible for people to come and talk to us one-on-one. Not in formal meetings. Um, and what I thought would work out really well. Would be that we will have a table at the open houses. Um, the high school will be September twelfth. The middle school will be September nineteenth and the elementary school will be the twenty-fourth. And then, um, yep, the, um, we also have on the list. The discussion of the cellphone usage. We had thought about October first or the third. We're gonna just hold off on that based on caps, with, based on the state. And we also need to hold off on using the high school auditorium because the chiller is down. So we're gonna cross that off for now, put a to be determined. There and then um with our budget meetings, um, those will be coming up. In mostly in December, but we're gonna do it back to the old way of the kickoff meeting. Which is really starts with a communication and um we used to do that in the auditorium way before your time. Years, wait years ago. Um, and people can just come in and ask questions about the budget. You know, it's, it's very, very casual. It's no presentations or anything like that. We just kinda give feedback on where the budget is, where we're going. From there, then we will set our um, our budget calendar. We will have our tri-board meetings. And then we're off and running.
I have a quick question.
Exhausting.
You, you're a little dynamo, come on.
Yeah.
On the open house schedule.
Yeah.
How are we gonna man that? Are we gonna, are we all gonna be there or are we gonna uh take volunteers to man a table?
I was gonna ask people for volunteering for, you know, which ones that they wanna go to or, you know, um. Right now, I'm, I'm in town for all of them, so I do plan on being at all of them. I think it's important um for that.
Yeah, and I absolutely volunteer for high school, middle school, elementary, we.
Is there any reason?
We won't be able to be there, but.
Is there any reason why whoever of, of the group, if we're all there, we're all there and if.
Right.
We're not.
We're not, we're not.
Exactly.
I would plan to attend all of them. That's for me.
Yep, and it's, and I wanna keep it casual, you know, if people have individual concerns or things, I think that we're all trained enough now. Say, can't hear about your individual student, you know, for, for uh reasons. And pass them along to Dr. DeBrio or to whomever that they need to speak to on, on that. Um, but I think it's good just for people to be able to see who we are and, you know, we're not just figures sitting here. So let's get those on our calendar as well. Alright, and moving along for acceptance of consent agendas one through three. Do I have a motion to accept consent agendas one through three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
One of us. Second.
Him? Sean, Sean says second. You didn't say second. Any discussion?
Well, I am. Well, I am personally sad to see some of the um, the names here that I have spent the last year kind of working with in the elementary school garden, moving on. Um, I'm also like, congratulations on moving on, so I just wanna say that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Kira. All right, motion carries. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, you can.
I promise it's quick, there's no follow-up.
That's okay.
I just wanna say to Dr. DeBrio, as well as Don, who's not here, and Ms. Peterson, thank you for moving the planting of the natural border at the elementary school garden. So, that's it.
Excellent. Is there anything else before I take a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kira. God, I'm talking to the heavens. And the second would be?
Jim, second. What the hell?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Happy start of the school year.
Amen.
Amen.
Two weeks and one day.
I know, it's hard to believe it's coming up.